Either way, the first three out of the columns.
Okay, go John.
All right. Fireworks. Fireworks. Used to be two, you shoot them anywhere, then they said no, didn't shoot them at all, and now you got a... They backed off on them, I think, after they started letting them be shot by commissioners in the legislative house. They decided that they'd better do something about it. But the, the, what I think we're talking about is, the way I understood it, was the use of fireworks and county property, in particular, within the, the...
Private citizens?
The private citizens, in the, in the parks and rec areas. The statute, it says it's lawful to shoot fireworks anywhere except indoors and in the right-of-way of a railroad or a highway. But it also goes ahead and puts a time limit on it just to be able to shoot them. Except for New Year's Day and New Year's Eve, you can shoot them all the time. But the, it is, and the statute goes ahead and says it's lawful for any person to, to shoot consumer fireworks, which are described as other things you buy in stores opposed to dynamite and, you know, all those big things. But it's not lawful to, to shoot them within a hundred yards of any electric plant or treatment plant or wastewater treatment plant or any facility engaged in sale of gasoline. So that makes perfect sense. Or within a hundred yards of the boundaries of any public use air facility. So we might have a little bit of a problem if you haven't had a, you know, at the air show, if you want to have fireworks out there. You might have to do it. But the one that was of concern and interest was that it's also unlawful to shoot within any, any park, historic district, historic site, recreational park, or other property which is owned, operated by county government, except pursuant to a special use permit. And then it provides that a special use permit, the county can issue a special use permit for the, for the discharge of the consumer fireworks. And it will designate, special use permit will designate the time and location as well as in charge fee not to exceed a hundred dollars. So for your, for the softball fields, the soccer fields down here, yes, you can charge a special use permit. It'd be very easy just to, to, under our special use ordinance, to provide for parks, tent grounds, not tent grounds, or recreational areas and whatnot, you'll be, you'll have to have a special use permit to do it. And it'll be here with the date and time and, and what the cops will be up to see.
Think they go back and take that two hour?
You would, so you would do that as like a zoning ordinance?
No, not once.
No, it's not like that.
So you just go, you just kind of enact, you just use a fire for it?
Yeah, I, I, you know, that's the only thing I probably need to look at and just make sure we got something. Because you're gonna get somebody that comes in here and says, well, tell me, show me where it is in the book.
Exactly, right, yeah.
And I'd rather have it in the book somewhere than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Process it through here like with the alcohol.
Yeah, and then after that, they just come up here and do it, it doesn't have to come through, through y'all at all for special use permit as a zoning.
So it doesn't have to come to us now?
No, I think it's alright.
It can be done then?
Yeah, we can do it here and get a, get the insurance, you know? Because I keep the calendar on, until Recreation takes over the rental of the Ag Building and any of their other rec facilities, then they can do it. I'll do it until that point. Or we can go ahead and get to the meeting.
I can, I can draw that so that if we, you know, it doesn't have, every time somebody wants to have a, you know, a boy scout meeting again, but you didn't have fireworks at, at one of the county parks, then they don't have to come to you to get it done. It's issued straight out of here.
Yeah, now the last retreat we had, the last award session, we already wanted to call it. Didn't we talk about fees?
For the Ag Center?
For the Ag Center.
Yeah, next you brought us the charge, the charge that had our fees on it.
Right, yes.
But there's not one for fireworks?
I mean, there's all together.
For other areas?
Oh, that was for the rental of the arena and the other two buildings.
And this is just for fireworks and it's state statute max of a hundred dollars. So you can have it, get fifty dollars wherever you want to put it at.
Unless you want to rent the building.
Yeah, that'd be a separate one.
Right.
And then we, you know, make sure that, you know, it can't be near gas stations and airports and that kind of stuff.
And it might be wise to do the hundred dollar fee because of the trash afterwards that's got to be picked out. It, it leaves a mess when you do fireworks.
Well, it's many hundred dollars for a reason, right?
Oh, yeah.
It leaves a mess. Very recent, I think, yeah, yeah.
But now, let me ask you this. Don't the probate court have something to do, probate judge has something to do with this?
That's the commercial fireworks, like the alleyway gardens.
If that's what's going to happen.
They do those.
They, they, they get a function, commercial.
Yeah.
I don't know why they do it, unless, you know, those are big time explosions, you know, which is... These others are, you know, kind of minor, and the consumer fireworks is different from the, from those fireworks. And so they gave that to the probate court and it said you can, you know, if somebody wants to use your property and to shoot fireworks, you know, it's, you can issue a special use permit and charge them, and they do it.
So if, if I'm wanting to have fireworks displayed in the normal hire?
A professional company.
Yeah.
Then they have to go to the probate judge?
Even it's all county, the problem is the judge won't be given the use of the county property, it would have to come through us.
So they have to go to the probate?
Have to go through them to get, if they're gonna do a commercial company, they would have to go through them to get the firework permit, permission from us.
Provided they have all the liability insurance on it, so.
And if we're under some kind of no burn, because it's a drought or something, then you know that, I know.
Yes.
We would say no then.
Try saying, you know, say no, we can't even do a special permit, so. Alright, number two, hemp. I said a minute ago, a few minutes ago, when I was going up hemp, it was a rope that you tied, we tied our fish basket too, and tied it to a tree, and yelled at the tree, so it wouldn't float away. So I've learned more about hemp the past few days than I've ever, ever been warned to know. First of all, let me say this, that cannabis, as it's called, I did not realize it had the history that it had. It, it, it goes back to, to some places in China, some places in, in the mid-east. It was part of a, a part of the religious ceremonies and whatnot. And then also, I didn't realize it, but until after our country was founded, there were, was a, a big use for, for hemp and hemp ropes. And so a lot of, a lot of, there was a big, very big use out of it in Kentucky years ago. And it grew, it grew everywhere. And I didn't realize that you can, for hemp and for what you get out of it, you can use it for wood finishes, you can use it for all kinds of manufacturing that is, that is, is, you wouldn't, you would never, never believe. To make hemp dresses, make hemp fabric, you can, you use it in fiberboard, you can use it in thermal insulation, to succeed in insulation, sometimes concrete block is made with hemp, particularly in France. Hemp plastic columns in automobiles, I mean, you name it. And it's hemp glove boxes in cars, rope, you know, I mean, it's unbelievable how much stuff hemp is used for. I know when I, when Nathan first called me about this, I, I looked and didn't see anything, a whole lot of Georgia code. And I put, sent out an email on the Georgia school, I mean, county attorney's list, which is usually a lot of people on it. And I got two responses, one from Nathan Lee up in Union, says his article is in the, in the Atlanta paper back before Christmas. And it talked about the need for the, or the want, some people wanted the hemp oil, which has a somewhat, some characteristics of marijuana, the marijuana oil. And then the other...
But it's, this is natural, right? Hemp is, is the natural, doesn't have any THC in it, which is marijuana.
The seeds do, you can squeeze them out, but then just...
But I think the hemp oil is easily available.
Yeah, right. But I, I said, is anybody doing anything about hemp? And I put, Dash and I, I talked about rope, I heard something from Nathan Lee. And then I heard that from Jimmy Forson, who is a attorney brother mine, that, that he's county attorney over in Spalding County. And his, his reply was that, what are y'all getting in the dope business? And that's the only thing I got, I got out of, but so hemp, the hemp plant is, is, is not in and of itself. It's the seeds and the oil that you can get out of it. I looked in the, in the Georgia code, and the first thing I found in the Georgia code that, that mentioned the word hemp was a statute from 2009 that prohibits the sale of candy lollipops that is marijuana flavored, and which, which means that any product which is flavored to taste like marijuana or hemp. And then that was the last thing I could find until this section of the legislature. And at this section of the legislature, there were three things that I, I, I picked up on. One, they changed the definition of marijuana to include where it had been in there and, and put it, and then it go ahead and shall not include hemp or hemp products such as defined in the Georgia code 2-23-3. Now, so that told me that it didn't make hemp, hemp products a crime. So I went to 2-23, and, and this is called the Georgia Hemp Farming Act.
Yes, that.
Of which I knew nothing about, but now, as of effective May 10 of this year, you can grow hemp. But you have to have a license from the state of Georgia Department of Agriculture.
It has to be tested some office.
And do that, and you've got to do a whole bunch of stuff and, and, and it defines what hemp is and, and it excludes the, the THC that's in marijuana. Now, in some, some, and there's nothing in the Georgia code that I could find that said you can't sell hemp oil. But it has a, it has a very, from everything I've read, it has some distinct similar characteristics to the marijuana oil THC in what you, in the psychi, psychological effects that you get, would get from, from, from smoking marijuana and, and, or drinking the oil. Now, as you, y'all all remember and know, that we have a, have the legislation passed a medical marijuana bill this year. And it controls it pretty, pretty, the medical marijuana and the oil, particularly the oil that coming out of it, just the marijuana itself is illegal, but the oil, you know, in the limited amounts that are specified in the statutes are alright. So, you know, it, it comes down to this, I found nothing that says specifically that you can't sell hemp, hemp oil. But it has similar characteristics of marijuana. Now, do you, and, and also, I wonder too about whether or not you want to get into this, are these, are these flavors, smoke shops?
Um, vape shops.
Vape shops. And that's where you find most of it, is in the vape shops.
They do, they put it in...
Yeah, they put it over the corner, and people, you know, come in and buy the hemp oil more than they do anything else. I'm working on now revising the Harris County Horticulture Case Code and the Harris County, and the Tru County Horticulture, Horticulture Case Code to prohibit, to prohibit any type of this, this hemp shop, these flavor shop, smoke stuff that comes out. If you remember vape shops. Because you remember last year, they had, had a, well, a problem, I think it was up in Charity County with kids up there that someone had OD'd and some real problems. So, you know, that may be another issue there. So right now, I can't, I can't tell you no, there's nothing that I can find that says no, it's illegal to sell hemp oil.
And I don't think it is illegal, because you did it with Dr. Under there, a physician.
The person who contacted us was after the plant, not the oil.
I think it was from over in New York, running over close to Shabbos.
I can't remember.
It can't sell the plant, no, and it can't sell the...
He hadn't been back.
No.
He hadn't been back, and that's what we need.
We've got one smoke shop in La Grange, and of course, we represent the city, and I asked Jeff, Todd, my partner, I said, is there any thing in the Georgia, in the La Grange code about, about smoke shops and hemp and whatnot? And he said, not that I know of, you know, that is there. So you may, you know, can you, can you stop here, hemp shop, I mean, what am I trying to say?
Vape shop?
Vape shops. Uh, you know, I, I, yeah, you probably can, you're gonna probably have somebody that's gonna wanna, gonna wanna get irritated about it. But there's nothing that I can find specifically that says no, you can't sell hemp oil, which the cannabis oil, which has the same, the same type of effect that marijuana has. One thing you could do, one thing you could do is, you know, you can't get them to do it all, they can't get a whole lot of cooperation out of them sometimes. But is to write an opinion letter to the attorney general and say, this is an opinion I want to give, is it correct or incorrect? Used to be the AG would, would write, you know, a letter for you, but now they all, they'll look at it and say, yes or no. And sometimes they won't even do that, they'll just send it back to you and say, we're not gonna comment. And I, I, I find, like I said, I find nothing that would prohibit it. Yet on another hand, too, you know, if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, and, you know, has the same effect as a duck, you know, you may want, you may want to do it.
Here's the way I understand it. You've got hemp, which is totally natural supplement.
Well, sure, you can use the plant itself, you know.
Yeah, if you get, I mean, you get that from, I mean, a doctor, you know, a doctor can give it to you. That does not have any THC, it has no mind altering effects or any of that. Then you have CBD oil, which comes from cannabis plant, the cannabis plant. But there's no THC, the way it's extracted, there's nothing, there's no mind altering THC in that.
But it has some, some similar characteristics if, once you take it. You know, it, it, you know, there's a little, you know, but it, it's given more for medication.
What it does is it blocks your pain receptors. Um, and so, that's why so many people would like to have the CBD. And I can talk to you all fine about that, but anyway, but the cannabis, if, if, if we were going in and buy, try to buy hemp on CBD oil, you don't go in and ask for cannabis, or you're asking for marijuana.
Right.
Go in and ask for CBD or hemp. But neither one of those has even, has THC.
So basically, if somebody wanted to add it to what they're already selling in a grocery store or a convenience store, they can sell it.
You can buy it at gas stations in Columbus.
Yeah.
There's one place in Columbus that sells CBD oil, and that's over there.
The old Marvin's?
By Applebee's on Jen Jenner, Mel Jenner, over in that area. That's the only place in Columbus that you can buy CBD oil.
My question is, is it illegal to grow hemp?
No, you don't, you gotta get a license.
You have to get a license from Department of Agriculture.
And the reason that, that I grow hemp is because we actually had somebody come in and ask about it.
Right, right. Growing it or selling it.
So if, I was gonna say, if you grow it, can you sell it after you grow it?
Well, yeah.
Not through, not, not in the store.
Right, I mean, yes, you can sell it for industrial and, you know, the other uses of it, but not... Because the only thing, the only part of the hemp plant that, that you can get any oil out of is, is the seeds and the, and the, not even the leaf. You know, so it's hard to get it out of there, but the rest of the plant is, you know, you could take and make, you know, rope that, you know, go through the grains, right enough, enough, enough fiber to do it. I, one of the articles that I, one Nathan Lee sent me was in the August 14, 2018 edition of the Atlanta Journal, and it starts out, says stacked, stacked in smoke shops and nutrition stores, customers can buy cannabis oil, droplets, capsules, or creams to treat minor aches and pains. And it, it's, while, it said without access to marijuana, the CBD is thriving for relief for anxiety, arthritis, and back pain.
All kinds of things, epilepsy.
Yeah, and so it was, that was one thing that, that was, you know, CBD oil is the way it's sold. And that was before the...
The state exchange.
Before the marijuana, before the legislature met this year to give, to change up it up. But it says cannabis oil is derived from hemp like marijuana, which like marijuana is a form of the cannabis plant. The difference in CBD is that CBD contains only trace amounts of THC, the main psychoactive component of marijuana. And either CBD or low THC medical marijuana gives users a high. So, I guess if you took enough out of it, you know, you might get a buzz, but same thing.
And the way I understood on medical marijuana is you can't sell it in Georgia, but you can have it in Georgia.
Yes, it, it is prescribed.
I can tell you somebody is in La Grange right now, that y'all probably would all know, that his son is severely autistic. Goes to Colorado, breaks a back.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, but yes, you can have it, but it's gonna have to be prescribed somewhere medically.
Yes.
And you can only, you can only possess so many milliliters of it one, one given time. So you can't come in and buy a gallon and use it for your, for your friend, so.
That's really just what I, because I didn't understand enough about it. And then, of course, when this guy walks in, and Brian's like, oh, I don't know.
So he was, if I recall, he was asking more about selling the plant.
Right.
Because he was telling us that the state allows it, and we were like, okay, we're gonna have to find out first.
There is somebody in Melvin Lee's that's like, well...
The Justice Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have to have a license to grow it.
Yeah, and, you know, the reason where, you know, I'm telling it up, but he's very much...
So I think it's your call whether, you know, if you wanna, you know, say no service stations, you know, convenience stores, you know.
Bean shops.
Yeah, or anything else, anybody else can sell, sell oil, that's your call. And if you don't, then I think they can do it.
They don't really, there's stuff that they're selling anyway.
Yeah, don't worry if you do it, because it does have some, you know, psycho effect, you know, and with, you can turn off the machine, but, you know, with, with, we know with kids, they can find, find something to give a buzz, one way or the other. So that's, that's, I think it's gonna be y'all's call as to how to do it. But there's nothing right now to prohibit, and I, I would be happy to write the, the name of the AG to do it.
Thank you, John.
Alright, number three. I ain't got an answer yet.
I don't think we're ever gonna get a road paved in districts. I'm probably gonna give up and move on, but...
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, David.
I started, I started as county attorney in 1999, and my file is dated 1999. I checked the title, it sat for a better part of a year, and then Carol said, we're gonna wanna pay you in 2001. And so I emailed y'all the other day, and I sent you a copy of the letter that I sent Jimmy, Jimmy Evans in 2001. And based on that, we prepared a lot of deeds, every one of the tracts, we got them in. Except for this, this one, this one track that's got, had about four people or five people on it, and we had a, they were not sure whose all the heirs were. We had, I got, I prepared them out to Navy for Jimmy to sign, get these people to sign, and it never came back. And then there was another little piece on the corner that never, never came back. And so we've updated the title. The one that had about, about four, yeah, four or five people on it, has gotten out, we think there are about 12, 12 people that have some, some interest in it. Now, we can go out and get, and we'll have, we're gonna have to find somebody that knows about all the families that... And what happens is that a lot of people will, you know, in, will, somebody will die, you know, owning a piece of property, and then they will never probate a will or the estate, and so then the children get it. And then one of those children dies and has children, and they get it, and for long you're, you're down to, you don't know who all of them, and, and... So we'd go that direction. The one, there's a small one that's on the corner down there, in 2001, it was owned by the mother, or the wife, and the two children, because the husband had died without a will. Now the mother's dead, the son is dead, and at least her daughter got the, got an order saying she owned that piece of property. The only issue with that is there's a little bit of question about how the, the corner turns down there, we'll need to resolve that. But the big one, and then, then at the end, you can have this, but at the end of the property, they have, and at this end, I think they're gonna pull a cul-de-sac. There wouldn't be any issue with the lady that owns that one down there, and we could get that.
Yeah, what y'all have is from the deeds from back in 99 and 2000 that had the drawings attached to it. That shows you what we have actually, the right-of-way of, and what we don't.
Yeah, and you, and this was kind of a strange one, because we, we, the DOT did this, and it's a 60-foot right-of-way. And usually you don't have...
Eighty foot.
I mean, 80-foot right-of-way.
Yeah.
We usually don't have 60 or 50-foot right-of-ways on county roads that are...
I don't know why DOT was involved.
I, I don't know either, but that's what they sent, we drew it that way, or Jimmy sent it, and we drew it that way. So, you know, we're, we're at the point now, you can see from that, that drawing where, where Fifth Road, it just kind of rambles around out there there. We get up, we get the piece of property we're talking about, we've already gotten part of it, I got works across the road from him, and that won't affect him, except that he just doesn't want anybody and his heirs to, you know, come on it. Now, we need to go out and get, he's three choices, go out and get deeds, come and chase them all around and get them signed. You can just forget about it. Or, third, you have the right of, the power of domain, that is, you can come in and condemn the property.
Yeah, I would guess.
Yeah, you, the way that process works, you have to have it praised, and then, then you would have to file a lawsuit, pay the money in court, you could take an order immediately, getting the right-of-way. And then the court would then have to notify all the heirs, and at that point in time, you're gonna probably need to serve the ones that, that are living, that we can find, and then we'd have to run an advertisement in the paper to notify anybody else that had a claim to it to come forward and make the claim. And then, then they, they argue in, in the court that, that, as to the value of the property. And of course, there is no property that's ever been condemned as, you know, as worth what the owners thought it was worth. So those are your choices, I think, you know.
So the part in green is we have the right of...
We have that.
Yeah, we got all of it.
Want to just pave down to that spot, skip it, pave the rest of it.
Carol, Fred, that, yeah, when they ask, they tell them.
Have we talked to any landlords over here, anybody that wants to pay bad enough or willing to give up?
Ms. Williams really wants it. Well, Ms. Williams is a good back here. It's really good for it. And Lynda Perkins, since she represents, and she had, there would be a problem with Lynda Perkins. Yeah, I've talked all of them, been to her this time.
Could they go back there and put a pressure on this guy down here?
That's exactly my thought, that probably the only way that's gonna, this is gonna happen, because I know Mr. Traglet well. And I have been out there numerous times to see Mr. Traglet, and just tell me exactly what he would do and what he would not do. And that's the, that's the parcel that has the eight or ten leaders. But, uh, I think the only way would be if Ms. Williams went after him.
I'd try that, try that first.
I think that's, I think that's the best way.
And she would obviously do that.
Yeah, I know she would do that. She, not having any hesitation whatsoever.
Sometimes you can have a friendly condemnation, where you basically, you know, agree on what the price is, and, and you're, you're trying, the only thing you're trying to do is establish who's got a claim to it. So if you could do it that way, that would be the easier way than having to slug it out in the, in the courthouse as to what value it might, what value it might be, so.
So if y'all, let me go and talk to Ms. Williams, especially Ms. Perkins, and see what her thought is.
What I would suggest we go ahead and do is go ahead and get it from Mrs. Perkins, straighten out this corner down here. And then go ahead and get while Mrs. Williams is still living, go ahead and get the cul-de-sac.
She's already given us most of it, but with, with the...
Just a little slide.
It's just a tiny, tiny bit on the cul-de-sac, we need a little bit more, and she won't be an issue.
Yeah, so get, get those two, and get that straightened out, and then, you know, at some point in time, somebody may come to you, and they, and then they want to. They may say, we're willing to, we're willing to do what we need to do to get it paid.
Correct.
What kind of timeline would we want for all that?
Just like he wants to.
I know, I should be.
But in the meantime, he can move forward with looking at the titles on the next road.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no.
All right, so what road do you want me to go on to next?
Number four, I think is Kingsborough. The next one is Kingsborough.
All right, we've done, done the, I've done the title work, as I recall, on Kingsborough. One issue we had down there, Kingsborough was, was coming in at an angle, the highway, and they were going, the DOT wanted to square that angle up. That, that road up. And once you squared it up, that got into somebody else's property. Now, has the DOT actually squared it up? I've got my file, I can pull it out and I'll find out. We've done most of the, like I said, most of the title work, and there was just one person down there that, that, you know, got affected when they squared up there.
Yeah, something like that.
And actually, when they've cut the hedges down there, they actually cut the hedges out where they planned to bring it out, so.
Yeah, and yeah, they did, they took a gap.
Kind of up on top of the hill so that the exited traders can see both directions.
Cut one, that was, that was the whole issue.
Yeah, I don't know who, I haven't followed up on that.
It's been a long time, I mean, a long time, it's been a good while, so I looked at that file, that was the, one thing we were waiting for, for them, to get that, that squared up.
I get one call a year of getting, asking for an update.
Then he follows up by coming here.
He does.
So he'll follow up. One person is pushing it. And he's very understanding and patient, he's been doing it for about, oh, ten years now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, before you give us four options that have been generated by talking to various folks. Option one, y'all seen before, again, it's very simplistic, option one is very simplistic. Everybody's, they have anniversary dates, and then they put their anniversary dates in a hat, basically, pick one out, and that person gets a fifth dog gift card to the local dog general. This, this program costs six hundred bucks a year, so pretty, you know, and it's once a month. So that's pretty standard, pretty basic. Now, option two, let's say all full-time employees are divided into two categories. Office workers, inside folks, and outside workers, public safety workers. When four employees can be selected from a category using a random number generator, the four employees would complete a simple questionnaire that describes who they are, and that's on the back sheet. This information and photograph of each will be prepared, hopefully counted website, or maybe internally distributed via email addresses or, you know, hard copy. The four, the four employees that will be spotlighted will receive a, you know, twenty-five dollar gift card, you know, twelve hundred dollars a year kind of thing. With two, sixty-seven full-time employees, it'll take five, five years to go through all the employees, to spotlight them, who they are, what, you know. To spotlight, answer basic questions, name, department, job duties, how long with the county, how long with the job career field. You know, just a little bit about each person, four per month. They all get randomly selected, inside, outside, twenty-five half years to complete it. Option three would be simply also longevity program. If you're here for one year, you get X dollars, five years, X dollars, ten years, X dollars, fifteen, twenty years, X dollars. And that's their way of getting recognized, all full-time employees. And then option four, I call that on-the-spot recognition. You know, department heads, myself, I like to finish, can give an award on the spot to any deserving employees who have gone significantly above beyond call of duty. This, on-the-spot award, we documented and are formally developed, and they will get a gift card of a monetary amount. And everybody will have maybe up to three to give per year. So that's on-the-spot as they see employees doing, going above and beyond. So basically, those are the four options, that staff and other folks around private individuals. This is kind of what we bantered about to give recognition, that's simple, effective. What we want to stay away from is a nomination process, where a department would nominate, every department would nominate various people, and then a committee would form to determine who's the best deserving one, and then pick that one. We want to stay away from those kind of things. Again, these are basically on a, everybody gets recognized. Everyone has a fair chance, it's all objective, there's, there's no subjectivity. So this is kind of what we come up with.
I like the service-oriented.
Which was option, on-the-spot.
Because to me, that's kind of like a devolverator, rather than because I've shown up for ten years, I get a reward.
Right.
That's just my personal opinion.
Or some.
Option four?
I must have about combined one of them.
Exactly, you can combine several of these together, take pieces apart and just put them together.
But to me, if I have some type of incentive, if I really go above and beyond, that I might give them, you know, there might be something that's, that's been longevity, I mean, but that's just.
The only thing that bothers me about that is some department heads are better than others as far as being or justly evaluating employees. And some of them might want to say, all of my employees are great, and so they're gonna try and start doing that.
I have that option.
And I don't necessarily see people doing their work, so I would.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, because that, that does become, you get some subjectivity coming in.
Well, you could get, you could get a phone call from a citizen, say, you know, Susan really helped.
We get letters from time to time.
Yeah.
Yeah, or a phone call, very rare, but we get it.
You know, she really helped me today, she really went above what she should have done.
Well, number three, be, John, would that be considered a bonus or a gratuity?
That's the longevity. Taxed at some point.
I think it's compensation, for a lot of, and all of these, kind of talked about it the other day, you know, we said, we're, we're giving them, anyway, a gift card for doing a good job. No, that's compensation for the work done, you know.
But it would be taxed, this, the gift cards would be taxed, and this would be taxed, so you might have your hundred dollars, have your sixty dollars.
You could always give them a gift card enough now.
I, I thought when we first started talking about this, we were just trying to come up with something that a lot of companies use at the five-year anniversaries, and they just recognize people. Doesn't have to be any kind of.
You're talking about a lot of money, you don't talk about monetary, or maybe.
Well, it could be, but I, I'm, no, I really wasn't thinking that we were talking monetary.
Right, like maybe when you, when they have their service recognition ceremonies, you get recognized for five years, ten years.
Are there special options, three, without any monetary awards?
Without any monetary awards, but I, because the way I read option three, since you started with year one, and that meant every year you were gonna do that.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's what we want to do.
We can just start with your files.
I don't know, I mean, that was what I thought we were talking about, you know, just recognizing long service.
Service.
Periods of service.
Service recognition.
We could choose how we want to do it, whether it's just pat on the back, or.
Your photo with, in the paper, or whatever.
We did that in ninety, nine-ish, and we do, I found the file, we do have photos of individuals who received, I think we gave them those little service pins. And they received them at, in the commission chambers, those taken over there. It's just group shots, yeah. Let's do a lot.
So you do it once a year?
We did it one time.
I do it once.
And there was so many grabbing about getting the little service pin instead of a monetary. So if you give them anything, they won't cash. Other than a, other, other than a recognition of your five-year service, here's your award, here's your paper, award certificate.
I think we can kind of, well, try to combine some of the best of the four parts of it. I mean, you know, I, I, I'm kind of like Harry, I was thinking service recognition, five-year, ten, all that. But I could see doing one where everybody that we're recognizing for being there at five, whatever time. We put them in the hat, they get the, you know, draw out, one of them gets the gift card, but you could still do the questionnaire to recognize that, that person. You know, I mean, kind of do it, the point, I was kind of like that, here, pat them on the back and say, hey, we appreciate doing this. I don't know about all the, like I said, that one-year service, a hundred dollars and all that, but I could see the gift cards as a way, that way they could go spend it on, I mean, where they spend a hundred dollars or whatever, on whatever they wanted anyway. But you give them a gift card, but that way you're doing it, you're recognizing them, but you're sitting there saying, all right, out of all you. You may want to draw out like two names, or if you got, say thirty people you're recognizing, you could do two.
Everybody's recognized.
Right. Then one person gets the lucky, he gets to be the, he or she gets to be the lucky winner with the fifty-dollar gift card, or a hundred-dollar gift card, or whatever it is. And kind of like combining some of the best part. I do kind of like the way, talking about the sample questionnaire and, and telling everybody who it is, because I don't know all of our employees. They probably don't know me either, I mean, you know, not that, no, we're not a part of this, but that's, that would be pretty nice to know.
The spot.
Yeah.
Put them on a website or internally distributed.
Yeah, and do the certificates, and everybody gets a picture of all the five years, all the tens and fifteens, and put them in the paper. You spotlight all of them in the paper, and you could do the, the one that gets the gift card gets to be the, the special one that does the employee name and all that, and if they don't want to. And just ask one of the others that didn't get the, you know, gift card. There may be some that don't want to tell how many grandchildren they got or something. They're not, nobody like Susan or me that talks about our grandkids.
Or some people have told me they don't want to do this. If they're picked, they don't want any part of it.
Two of us here have already said that.
No picture, no questionnaire.
They don't want any of that.
Nothing, nothing. And, and they can be, they can be, they can be omitted.
Yeah. Keep this out, since we don't have our personal information.
And send it in one.
No.
And if you do give any kind of monetary award, it's taking away any evaluation at all, because it's just totally random.
Right, you do, yeah, that way you're just picking out of the hat of that group of people you recognize. I mean, I think we could take probably the best of all four of the options and come up with one good.
Five years later, would you be excluded from the, of the drawing?
I would think, I would think if you're an elected official, you should be excluded. But if you win it at five years, and then you say you get recognized at ten. I think, I think it feels, yeah, I think.
Five years that you get.
Put the hat twice, if you go ten years.
Right, because you will have recognized five groups before you come back around anyway.
What about this, this brainstorming here, let, getting little bits and pieces, I have an option three, start with five years of service. Everybody with five years of service every year, so once a year, five years of service, that would be once a month, really. But anybody with five years of service will do the questionnaire, see where they are, and those grouping of people we put in the hat, drawn for gift card. That's kind of bits and pieces of all.
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty?
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, so every.
You're gonna do that every month?
Every month, I'm not saying that loud, every month that people have a five-year, when they, when they have a five-year anniversary, every month, January, February, March. That grouping, it might be two people, it might be ten people, it might be eighteen people, it might be nine. So every January, so every month, anybody, everybody hits a five-year mark. Will, will recognize them, photo if they want to, the questionnaire if they want to, distribute that. Those people put in the hat, one picked out to receive a fifty-dollar general gift card. That's the bits and pieces, but, so, you know, we have talked about this until the horse is dead. It's a lot over here, I can smell it. Somebody said, well, okay, let's say this starts in September. In August, somebody is five years and five days. So they hit the five-year mark before it was implemented. What about those poor souls? You, you know, those kind of.
I think you do, I don't think you do it every month. I think you do it like, like most companies, once a year, you recognize employees who hit the five-year, ten.
During that year, during that year, not that month, that year.
It's a one-time deal, one-time thing in the paper, one, one call.
And it starts January first, and we recognize our July first.
The only other way to do it would be during every six months. If you hit it within the first, this six months, boom, this six months, but I agree, I, every month, I think it's either, it's either gotta be one year, and that way you don't, you get out of that five years and five days deal. If you did it, if you hit it within this year.
Within the year, or whatever period you talk about.
We can bring them all in.
From this day forward.
Recognize them, right.
So maybe every, every year, those people have a five-year mark, ten-year mark, fifteen, twenty-year mark, questionnaire, picture.
Gift card.
Gift card.
Gift card.
One person gets a gift card.
One person. One in the five, one in the ten, one in the fifteen, one in the twenty, or one out of the whole batch?
I think we could do one out of every year, if we only did one fifty-dollar gift card for. Yeah, yeah, if you do it. Do it for your five.
And if you're the only one that's there for twenty, then you, you're the lucky.
That's just the way, that's just the way it chips.
That's right, you're lucky.
What about, and then on the spots, that could be also implemented as a separate thing.
But make that a little more rare.
Three a year, per, per person?
Do you know what I'm saying? Like make it so it's a little more special, and it, I mean, for me to go above and beyond.
Well, to me, well, to me, it'd be like, if we're gonna be on the spot, then you go on the on-spot, everybody help with tornadoes. But some of them were helping because that was part of the job.
Right.
Not mean that ugly for anyone, but you know what, they really went above and beyond, but it was also part of their.
I think you gotta be special.
Yeah, it's gotta be something.
Three a year, real special.
Yeah.
How many departments do you have?
About thirteen.
Okay, so you have it for.
But then, you know, you know, but then, you know, again, talking out loud to everybody, you know, there's these guys on mowers, they're never gonna get recognized, there are mowers. You know what I mean, or the trash truck drivers, or, you know, those kind of people that are out and about, that nobody ever sees, because they're out, they're, they're, they're out in the, out, out, they're their thing outside. So that was a drawback.
Yeah, I think it is a drawback. Because then the folks that don't, that do fall that category, they aren't gonna be recognized.
Maybe one or two, no, and it's not a lot. We get, we get phone calls, we get a few phone calls, but usually it's either, or email, but it's not a lot, I mean, you know, maybe a handful a year, if that.
I mean, I think we have that, I think we should have that, I think we should already have it, and if somebody sends in, say somebody's on the mower, stops the mower, jumps off and goes over and helps somebody that's in a burning car. Then, then we should already be, hey, recognize you, that's what happened to one of our school bus drivers.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, but she's getting recognized, I think we do that, but I don't know if we, I'm kind of like with Harry, I don't know if we put it in the department head to decide, well, you know, I think you did something really special, you know, it needs to be.
Maybe department heads need to submit to you.
What they do.
I have the opposition criticism if you do that, because.
I think it should just be something that if it comes in and you know that it's above, and be honest, then we, we just say.
It's almost heroic.
Right, we want to bring you in and say, we appreciate this and recognize you. I mean, I think we should have it, it's just.
So what you're talking about is more a longevity. Well, if you're basing it on their years of service.
No, no, I'm talking about the spot thing, I think you should just have the spot thing, period. If somebody sends in and said that somebody jumped off and saved this guy, then we're gonna bring him in regardless of he gets nominated by the department or not, we'll just bring him in.
Oh, yeah.
Right. That's what I'm saying, just, we don't need to even. That's what I'm saying, just, we don't need to even get into that, just.
Right, so the award, the actual other.
And we may not get one for five years, and all of a sudden, you might have three in a row where if somebody's done something really, you know, they saved somebody, they ran into a burning house or whatever. Well, we, you know, we can have a little certificate or something made, bring me and recognize them.
I think we have some.
Hey, let me craft up the, the parts and pieces and put it together and strip it out and, and I think that would be a good, a very good start.
Yeah.
That was on there because of them.
Well, I'll, I'll say it again, I just, I just don't think we should be charging a membership for our community center. Because I don't think, one, I just don't think it's working. But two, you know, we built that for our citizens and I think our citizens, whoever they are and where they live, should be allowed to go. I talked to about five or six county employees, maybe a few more, and a lot of them told me that they wouldn't go buy a membership to the community center. They felt like that their taxes built it and all that. Well, I also talked to other people who said the same thing. And I'm like, well, you know, but you could say that about anything.
What about out-of-county residents, how do we know who they are?
Well, see.
It's a driver's license.
Yeah, it's a driver's license to prove.
We, so no matter who walks in the door, you don't have to pay, but you gotta show an ID?
Nope, if you don't, if you live in the county, you don't pay. Anybody that does not live in the county, they would still have to pay. You know, because we built it for our citizens.
I know, but I'm just saying, if they walk in the door.
And they show their driver's license and they do not have a Harris County address, then they would pay the.
So everybody that walks in the door has to show their.
They do now, you know, everybody gets a little card you zip in.
The problem there is the person at the front desk, but they're gonna know that half of Midland is in Harris County and the other half's in Missagoogee County.
Well, you'd have to say that by now.
West Point.
You'd have to say that by now, too, yeah, I mean, I agree.
You don't have many of those, I don't think.
So, so basically, you know, in, um, membership fees, we're budgeting fifty-seven thousand dollars next year in total revenue.
Well, maybe we need to wait to the end of that fiscal year, so we've got that budgeted and starting on a new fiscal year if we're gonna do that.
So it's not much.
Maybe it's something.
It's fifty-seven thousand dollars. So, maybe next July, if the board wanted to, we can just have memberships. Obviously, free memberships, they, but out-of-county folks is five-dollar daily fee, something like that.
But we would still charge locals or indoor for rental of.
Yeah, you'd, I mean, you'd still charge.
Yeah.
If you rent the rooms and, and all that for birthday, I think she'll do. I actually think if you, we did away with membership, we might get more people to use it, because you might get more people coming in knowing, oh, I rent a room and come in. Now, I also know that we have people that use it now that, uh, see it as their own little, you know, that's their own little.
Family gym.
Yeah, for, you know, lack of a better word, and that's okay, too, but. I did, to me, it just makes no sense that, that we built it and we're charging money and it's really not, I understand fifty-seven thousand dollars, fifty-seven thousand dollars. But we're spending a whole lot more than that on it, a whole lot more than that on it, so it, you know. We, we got everything else we built for the county citizens to use free.
John, does the, um, District County charge for the use of their membership, so? And the school board charges for the use of the gym or whatever. But those ones will not specific for children, not for the, the rest.
And if you do away with them, you probably want to make a decision, sometimes weigh in advance of the, when it goes into effect, so that we won't be selling memberships and having to refund anything.
It could affect the job first, that's twenty-twenty, plenty of time for advertising. And then all of this fee schedule will be very, 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 um, easy to administer. There'll be zero or X dollars per fee for out-of-county guests.
Have we seen any other game that you said?
A little bit, a little bit, but nothing, nothing of any significance. It's been there for what, seven years now? It is, it is what it is.
I think people know about it more and whether they're using it more, if, you know, for a while, people were like, community center, what do you mean we have a pool, you know, they.
And what, what effect is the Silver Sneakers program?
Yeah, then with our charge pay terms companies, even though we don't charge the citizens.
Well, see, you would, with that.
That's their program.
That's their program, so they're actually paying them.
What do you mean they're paying them, who's there?
They would be doing, they would be paying to be a part of the Silver Sneakers program. So if you were a Silver Sneaker and you lived in Truitt County, then you could come participate in any event we have here. Because Silver Sneakers has paid for you to be here. That's gonna be, even now, they can do that, you know. But, so you're actually paying into a program so that you can go wherever that program is going to be. So it'd be like that Silver Sneakers is actually renting out the facility. They're an outside organization renting out the facility. Even though you're a citizen, but you're coming because of that program, because you're, because if that program's out of Truitt County, you'd have paid the same amount of money to go to Truitt. Or it's Missagoogee or wherever they were.
First by memory, I was Silver Sneaker.
The agreement.
The fee, you remember there was a fee?
Yeah, they would pay us.
That's, yeah, I don't remember what it was.
It was, it was not much.
Two dollars, fifteen cents. Yeah, it wasn't a whole lot, it wasn't a lot.
So those people would pay, they would have to pay?
The Silver Sneakers organization.
An individual would not pay.
Individual could.
They'd just wipe the bar.
They're identified as Silver Sneaker program, Silver Sneakers get told, you know, X number of visits this month, or however often they do it, from a member of Silver Sneakers.
Like if you pay to be a part of the AARP.
Right.
You know, if you pay and you go and use the AARP, you're still paying the membership, but you don't have to pay wherever you are, you use your card or whatever.
So, so say I want to be a part of the Silver Sneakers. But there's no fee for using the community center?
Right, not to you.
Now, do I pay? Why do I pay?
That you pay, you pay, you pay your membership to Silver Sneakers.
Right, okay.
Or is the membership usually paid by your, uh, healthcare provider? So your healthcare provider would pay your membership.
Mine does not.
Okay, but some of them do, some don't, and then you would go and visit all these, uh, facilities for free using your program card. But then Silver Sneakers would give that, the county, two-fifty per visit.
Yeah, okay, I got this one, I couldn't remember.
Or, or you could go and approach like a private, you know, a private business model, you know, Planet Fitness, go in there, pay twenty-five-dollar initiation fee to get you on the list. Now refundable and ten bucks a month. If you use it that month, you make ten bucks.
But that's the Planet Fitness.
Oh, yeah, but we could use that business model for this. You know, initiation fee of X dollars and then a usage fee per month of X dollars to go in there and use any program. Or you can use any, you know, the pool, the fitness center, the, the gym, but rentals are, uh, are additional. And the Zoom class is additional, those kind of things.
So you would still pay for classes of this model?
No matter what, you, you pay for rentals and classes, those extras.
See, they don't.
Just to walk in the door, to go on the pool, the fitness center or the, uh, gym, initiation fee, X per month fee, boom.
See, and all I'm talking about being free is to use the pool, fitness center and the gym.
Right.
Everything else would stay the same. But if I just want to walk in and go swimming, I swipe my card, because you can still do the card system, so you have your, I go in and, but if I want to take the Zoom class.
That's right.
Then I pay extra, because that's a, because that's an extra thing. So all I'm talking about is taking out the, the low membership fee. Basically the cost of your card of where you're going. You know, because all, you know.
All you're taking out is the senior, the senior seventy-five dollars a year membership.
Or the family.
I wouldn't have.
Or the family.
Whatever.
Right, no, you're right.
Classification.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's it, but you would still pay for everything else. I don't want to get rid of all of that, I just think that if you, you live here, you want to go get on the treadmill, why do you need to pay a membership for something that you helped build?
Would they still make application and then get a, and then get a card?
Card, I would think you would still need a card.
Otherwise, how you get them?
I would think you would have to come, you would have to come in once a year, kind of like we do with school system. And prove that you're a county resident, just like we do for Little League, just like we do for the school system, you know, and you have it set up and, and I live, here's my proof where I live and boom, right there, you get your card and you go.
You're good for a year, would that membership, would that initiation fee be charged? Ten dollars or twenty-five dollars?
Because we gotta, we gotta make the cards.
Card and keep up with everything and keep the technology.
Well, I would find, yeah, I would say how much it would take.
X dollars.
X dollars for the cost of the card, say it, it costs us fifteen dollars.
It's a rich stretch of things.
It's a rich.
It's not refundable, what's a year?
Fifteen bucks, and then you get to use the gym, the pool and the fitness center for free, for free, but anything else over that, above and beyond, it's kind of like a two-tiered system. You pay for all the classes, you pay for everything else.
And then out-of-town folks would pay.
A five-dollar daily fee or whatever, yeah. So if, if, if I'm out, if I don't live in the county and I come with Susan, she could swipe her card, she goes in free, well, I just pay five dollars.
Right, right. Let's just, let's just assume here, um, let's say five hundred people did it, okay? Five hundred a year times twenty-dollar annual fee. That's ten thousand dollars right there, that we would recoup of the fifty-seven.
Right.
And that is streamlined.
And you still get your money from the classes and whatever else.
And the rentals and the smurfs.
And then anybody else that comes in that doesn't live in the county.
That's right, so we can recruit maybe half of the funds.
Right. Because we're already losing our shirt on it anyway.
How many members do we have now?
I don't think we know. I get a different figure every time.
But of the thirty-five.
We need to strengthen that program, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Of the thirty-five thousand people in this county.
Not many.
Our, our membership is probably one percent. Yeah, probably so.
And it used to be higher, you know, when it first opened, it was higher, but I think the last, the last number I had was like thirty-five hundred.
I think, when it first opened, it was like five thousand.
Yeah.
It was higher.
And then, and then it kind of dwindled down over years. Let's just say there's twenty-five hundred members, times your twenty-dollar membership fee, there's your fifty thousand dollars. And twenty-five hundred out of thirty, thirty-six thousand citizens, that's not.
But you know, and, and it would be a card, you know, for the household, you know, like we wouldn't charge, you know, because, like if I come in and get a card.
One, uh, they come in and they get an application for a household.
One, right, one application for a household.
Each person would need a card. Because you got kids that drive.
Oh, they, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, if you don't want to sit there, then you're gonna be, then you're gonna get right back into, I got six people in my house, that's, you know, twenty dollars times six.
Well, no, I think it would just be the application fee period for the family and how many cards you want to need. Give their names.
According to the, just looking at the, I, we're still waiting for, trying to get a couple of things, uh, worked out with the activity, uh, on the contract, but the, the, the contract that I have on my, my, I pay as a, as part of the work I've sent out and it never changes with it. So the description of each program appears on the portal and gives the, that, and then it's got five blanks, one on Silver Sneakers, uh, fitness program including, including, including the, uh, uh, activity, health, uh, the priority classes, three dollars per member, visit up to twenty-four dollars per member per year. Uh, there's another one for two-fifty up to twenty dollars a year, uh, kind of the same thing. Then there's a prime three-fifty per year, fully up subsidized, up to thirty dollars a year, and then another three-fifty up to thirty dollars a year. I don't, I don't know what all that, you know, what all that means, but, uh, that's what, that's what they were saying, so I guess if I came in and, and, uh, I paid Silver Sneakers and they would pay three dollars per member visit up to twenty-four dollars a year for me, they would use it.
Eight times.
So they actually cash it? They only, they only, they cash it then, you can only use it X number of times. What happens after that, you, is it three?
Uh, I'm sorry.
I would think it would be, I think it would be.
So you could, you're talking about the cards, right here, if you look at what we have, if we were to charge a active military family, it's seventy-five dollars for a family of four. Five dollars for, per additional family member, so if they have five members, it's eighty, if they have six, it's eighty-five.
Right.
If we did twenty dollars for an application fee and then do three dollars per card. Yeah, so everybody gets a twenty-dollar application fee and one.
Per household.
Per household, and then however many cards you need is, with two dollars, three dollars. Yeah, two dollars, three dollars, wherever it is. So if I needed six, well, then I know I'm gonna pay that extra.
Eighteen bucks.
Right, but if I only need one, because I live alone, then I pay twenty-two dollars or twenty-three dollars, wherever it is.
So what, and the registration fee plus a card fee, you know, of two, three bucks or whatever it is.
Yeah, that costs.
And I think if we go that, down that road, we have to have IT built in, like we could have been doing all along, but we chose not to. When you're, because when your anniversary day comes, boom, you, thirty days ahead of time, you go get an invoice.
Right.
Eric's been trying to get that down there.
And now, the way they do it is. Yeah, if you come one year and then you skip three years, you're not gonna pay another one till the next time you come in, they say, oh, your expires. And that's crazy.
If I get us a mail, I'm probably gonna write a check and send it back.
You're gonna send it back in.
No, I agree.
Few people will stop.
Yeah, I agree, we need to, if we're gonna do that, we need to stay vigilant on it.
Yes, we do, it should be easy to do.
It, we're not. Basically, they have, they have software to do this, it's very antiquated, it's never been up to date for decades, not decades.
That's, that's never been done.
What, the software?
Remind them, talking about.
It is Harris County, that has not been.
Yeah.
What?
The annual.
Remind you.
All the reminders.
Because every year Harris brought it.
Yeah.
Since we've been on.
So the software, I guess, does have a capability?
I don't know. You didn't have capability and they didn't want to do it.
I think they did.
I think, I think it does, I just think that, I think maybe they, they weren't, um, technologically advanced to, to do it. And I say that from someone who are probably not technologically advanced.
Same way. Everybody loves convenience, are we set up for it, or could we set up for, you could pay it online versus like you mentioned, writing a check and sending a check?
If you can pay, if you can pay the county water bill online, we surely can do that.
But there's a fee for that.
I know, but I'm just saying, you, you know, but if.
People pay for that convenience.
There goes that three dollar, well, you charge everyone the convenience fee.
Yeah, they, yeah, I mean, if they pay it online, it's convenience fee, but I'm just saying, if we can set up, set it up for a county water, I know we can.
That's another one we gotta change, too, is county water.
Yeah, we're working on that right now, because, because the, uh, the meters, all the meters, the smart meters, once the new meters are put in, then it's all electronic and all that can have occurred. You know, all kind of different kind of building options, payment options, that are built without.
And that's another reason we don't need it.
Yeah. So how about, let me draft up a new, um, community center membership fee schedule for like a, like maybe twenty dollar per household, once a year in the initiation. And say three dollars or whatever per card, once a year, um, uh, with a computer program that reminds you every year, effective July first of twenty-twenty. And then an out-of-town fee of X dollars per daily visit, or something like that.
Because right now, you know, if you were to pay out of, you know. Right now, you know, it's a hundred and twenty dollars if you want to pay out of county for an annual fee.
I wonder how many we get.
Probably not. Out-of-county people? I imagine location would be.
Nope, but you know, if you, but if you tell them you're doing it, it's five dollars per day fee, and they want, you know, and they come down here and they can't get in the pool or whatever, CC pool or whatever, because of weather, whatever. Might be able to come down here, you get five dollars down here. We might actually get, we might actually get an uptick in some revenue just because it's a five-dollar fee to come down for a day instead of a hundred and twenty dollars for the year. Because some of them won't pay it, because they don't think they'll get a hundred and twenty dollars use out of them.
Let me ask this, would someone be able to purchase a guest card? Reason being, because we've had to make arrangements or qualifications for grandparents having their children who are living in Alabama come over and stay a week. They're not gonna want to pay five dollars per kid, per day, to come to the community center. They want to bring them over here, but they're not gonna pay forty-five bucks to bring their kindergarten children or whatever it may be per day.
Might get an option, and all it would do is bring them over here.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, just some kind of.
Or maybe an out-of-town, instead of daily fee, maybe a weekly fee also.
Have two different rates.
Something like that.
A daily fee and a weekly fee. A daily fee and a weekly fee. Per person. To kind of keep it streamlined.
It's getting complicated.
It always does, because the way questions come up and everyone misses something and they.
And they're like, oh, yeah.
It's like buying a fishing license at the O S M, and they always, they, you get like a daily rate for a, for a day.
Yeah, we talk about, it's true. Same, same, same. And you know, you have to buy a duck stamp from the federal government, regardless of where you are, you know, working.
Yeah, very good.
Yes, you have. Last night. All right, the next time, define benefit plan, Susan?
Um, Jennifer Webb brought this to my attention, that she doesn't really have, um, a substitute, because she can't use judges who have retired from the county to assist her when she's out there on vacation or anything like that, because they've retired and they can't come back part-time. So she said that some other counties that she's talked to have allowed them to be contracted for, contractors rather than employees. And John, I don't know, that's six of one, that doesn't, no, I can manage that. But she can use judges who are resident but retired from SCOGI or through.
Right, right.
So she can do that, but she said she can, uh, do some hearings over the phone, she can do some warrants online, but she can't do search warrants online. She said the probate judge, uh, Judge Lakes has helped her out on occasion, but he doesn't want to do it all the time without compensation. So I don't know if, um, I don't know that we want to change the whole defined benefit plan to let anybody come back, retire and come back part-time. But if we could allow her to contract and they wouldn't be employees.
Based on, on a, on a, on a basis.
Yeah, um, and there is a minimum that magistrates have to make. She said you would know that, Nancy.
I think the, the magistrate has a, it's a percentage of the chiefs, based on the chief's judges.
No matter how many hours they would work.
It'd be, well, it'd be broken down hourly, I guess, unless they're part-time and then they get a flat.
Because I asked her, I said, well, what would the hourly rate be? And she said, well, not really an hourly rate, because by statute, John, there's a minimum for magistrate.
Yeah, it's, it's based on the chief, her, it'd be based on herself.
Couldn't, couldn't we, I mean, I understand that, but couldn't we do this kind of like school teaching? You know, teachers out, you can bring in a sub, and if you're a certified teacher that's retired, you get paid a little more to be the sub. I mean, I know that's taking it to a whole different level, but you know, something, you know, because we have teachers that are retired that come back and work and get paid forty-nine percent.
And they're not.
And they're not.
But they are employees, subs are employees.
But it would be a part-time job, so.
It, it, I, I thought that's the way they, they did it, uh, was it just on a, on a, on a daily basis, you know, you would have, uh, if you had a whole bunch of cases she could, she could have, uh, get somebody to come in and sit and take part of the cases and, and take the criminal cases, and she'd take a similar life person and just did it on a, on a, like I said, a daily basis, uh, and, and they would be independent contractors, like not county employees.
Could, so in that sense, even if they have retired from the county.
Because the senior boys have retired.
Yeah.
Yeah, retirement, I, I think you're probably better off like the Board of Education, there's two clear that if you can.
I think you have to look at.
And of course, you got, if you're talking about bringing retired judges back, then you've got, you've got a whole bunch of, you've got a whole lot to do.
They're not county employees anyway.
No, but still, you, still, you got, especially judicial against doing that.
When she talked to me, she had one per, a county employee who's retired November, December, that she would consider as her magistrate, as, uh-huh, and, but that was the sticker there, that you couldn't come, you have to give up his benefits, his benefits.
Well, this all came about when we first, when we were allowing people to retire.
And they were still coming back to work.
And still coming to work, so they were getting their full salary and working.
Yes.
Plus they were getting, they retired.
Yes, yes.
That's what brought this out, up in the first place, and it's not that.
And there was no designation whether it's.
I'd do that.
I don't have a real problem with, in special circumstances, very few times, bringing somebody back, but that's.
I would think she wants to bring the certain, same person back all the time. So, and I don't know how many hours she's talking about, because the other guy, I forget what he made, but, but.
She said, um, Lou Barra, I think she said he made nine hundred dollars a month.
A month, right. So that's not a lot, but that, that number seems to ring a bell.
How many, how many, how many times, I haven't, I haven't appeared before him on some citations, uh, but I, you know, I don't know how many days he's said.
Just, just maybe she wasn't there.
She said, right now, I'm handling, I'm doing some things online, I'm doing some things over the phone, but as we grow and the numbers grow, it's going to be more and more of a burden. And, um, so. But you just wanted us to see if there was some solution.
I'd allocate it on a, on a, you know, just like said, an ad hoc basis, you know, on, you know, getting, you know, whoever appoints, as long as they're not, you know, are not retired employees, and then come up with a daily, you know, compensation rate.
But they can't be, well, I think.
As opposed to according.
It's what I'm saying, yeah.
As opposed to paying nine hundred dollars a month if she sits one day.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I don't know that I'd do that, you know. I look, I look at the statute and see what the, what the magistrate judge is, and there's, what, what she, what can be paid to the assistance.
I mean, she said that we do have some judges who are residents of Harris County, but they retired from someplace else, and she might use them if they were willing, but they're not, the ones she knows of aren't willing.
The one she wants to hire is willing, uh, but he is receiving these full-time benefits.
So think about it, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, she needs help.
Okay, then I ask about the county development, um, I know y'all know that their friends are, they're in our district, district authority, beginning to heat up the government's lives. And I think it's time that we go out to some support issues for those developers. I know that there's, there is an issue with, and I'm talking about the next five years.
Of personnel supports, that what you're talking about, county develop?
Possibly, I've already met with the water department, I've already met with EMS, and I've already met with the sheriff, and just gave them kind of a brief update about what is and what could be going on within the next five years down there. Right now, you've got, uh, Edgar, who's building, who have a ton of Haiti homes, right now he's putting in fifty-three. Um, he's saying those are gonna be open in the fall.
This year or next?
Yeah. Yeah, and then you've got the Grove, and we're probably looking at something coming out around June of next year. So I'm concerned about, about support. There are also possibly some things down the line. Um, and Edgar has already purchased another four hundred and fifty acres, about that one, Hootson, in three fifteen. Um, that's already his, he has not had it come in for rezoning yet, but that could possibly be another two hundred, but then twenty-three across the road on Hootson right now. So here's, um, and that's what I want, just wanted to try and plant everybody's mind that I'm concerned about the support. Personnel-wise, you know, our deputies, our EMS, the water, and I know that JF has, has some concerns about it.
Yeah, I've been wanting to go about that too, because, and let's just take Erickson's proposed development by Grayrock. He's talking about thirty-five percent of that will be green space, that's correct, and eight percent commercial, if he's able to fill, but he's got two hundred and four lots, a quarter, quarter acre lots there. I don't know, and I don't know whether Brian checks this, but when you've got something like that, is, is there an automatic check with Jeff to see if, if water is available for those people?
He said he sends those to them, I don't know if he has a meeting, I mean, he sends them to the Board of Education and the Water Department.
He's scheduled today.
Okay. Cause I was gonna, I meant to, but didn't call.
But he sends out to thirteen different agencies, departments, whatever.
But do they just throw them on their tables and not?
Sometimes.
Sounds like he needs, if that being, they need to have.
I think we get, so just, you know, one of the, one of the criteria in there is, is it a burden on utilities and whatnot? Well.
That's for rezoning, yes.
For rezone, and that's, that's what, that one may happen. We need to be able to know whether that's an issue.
He said that he does, he does talk to them, and I know that he and Jeff do talk, water, I do know that for a fact.
But, you know, of course, this is just young lady talking, but fuds, you know, have, have reduced, and they have, you know, have, in the past few years, have gotten, you know, real, real, the, you know, the, the, the vogue. But you're talking about small lots, uh, and you're talking about more people, whereas a few years ago, you went for the two acre lots.
Right.
Because of the, you know, the, the, uh, rapid development that's going on. But when you drop them to quarter acre lots, you're gonna have them coming in like, you know, like flies, so.
Well, but there's a condition, it's gotta be near utilities.
It's gotta be.
It's gotta be on public.
It's gotta be a public, yeah.
What stops some kind of action against the county for not making sewer available?
That's a good point.
Because.
I think it says where already exists.
Will you use SCOG?
Yeah, I think.
It does.
But I don't know. Hi.
It's up to him to really contact and make sure they can take on his project, whoever's doing the PRD.
I just want to make sure it's done.
Oh, yeah.
I would hate for someday for some developer to say, well, I put in all these buildings and now you're telling me you can't have the pressure in the water system to put out a fire.
No, I know, I know that Brian does that and does that religiously, and whether they get back to him or not.
That's, that's the question.
Yeah, that's what I. Some of them do, he says he very rarely hears from SCOGs, very rarely.
So you're bringing up fire, we're talking about, you know, sheriffs and having enough deputies. I'm really concerned with our, you have concern in our fire department.
We know you don't have enough already.
Right, and it's all volunteers, and if you were, if we were to try to pay with just two people at, at the station wagon, you're looking at three million dollars.
You're talking about a lot of money.
Yeah.
But you know, you know, you, but you, you more than most of us here, you know, been here for all your life, you know that, but when the volunteer fire departments come to the Board of Commissioners and say they're willing to consider some kind of plan of beginning putting in paid employees, because then we want their having trouble.
Right.
Getting, getting volunteers, period, and particularly younger volunteers who build the point.
And they're aging out.
And they, they are, and that's.
They're aging out.
And we do have the. And that's gonna be a huge expense.
And we do have a fire cadet program at the high school that.
But is anybody participating?
Well, we, we, for a while, it was good, and then it's kind of dwindled out.
Yeah.
Those young people are, they got other things going on, and that's what I'm saying, it's a concern, because I talked to our volunteer fire department, built out by me and, and some of my friends are volunteer fire departments, I know Matt, it's, it's, it's a struggle.
It is, it's true.
Well, and I know we just passed that particular ordinance, but if we're having this kind of conversation, then what do you think? That, um.
I think we oughta. I think we oughta.
Well, I can tell you that, that from what I know about, up y'all, I don't think any of this that I have been written on with the PRD.
Right.
Except Blue Grove, and they're not really PRD.
That's different. It's a CUP then.
That's, that's totally.
I can tell, I'll tell you, you know, one of the comments that we're gonna get, and we are gonna get it, is, and we had it on the Republican primary.
Yeah.
There was a question, uh, do you favor the two acre, or I'm not sure exactly where you had to.
I think the two acre.
Four thousand and some odd votes, and eighty-three percent of them came in and said, yes, two acre, no. And then, then here we are looking at this PRD that says.
When they talk about your fire departments, I, I, one point in time over the past years, I, I looked at it in, in about a paid fire department, you know, and the question is how you're gonna pay for it? You can create a special tax discharge for the county wire. And levy that tax county-wide to pay for that, that, those paid fire, fire taxes. So it can be done without, but it's still a military rate, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's still gonna fall back on.
If you're gonna have, county government, you're gonna have to pay for it, you know, unfortunately.
But I, I just wanted to kind of bring that up, because, I mean, I'm sitting right there in the middle of it. In the middle.
I, I think with what, you know, we said, all right, we've done the comprehensive plan, we said now we're gonna look at, at our ordinances, some of the ordinances there, and that's part and parcel of it, and folks can look at us and make some, make some changes and do some things.
And I do.
And we do need to be on top of that.
I, we do, we do, and, and I think that, and I don't know this for a fact, but I think that we're gonna, we're gonna see it coming quicker than we thought.
Well, you know, we could rescind that.
Yes.
Um, more easily than we can boot down one when it comes to us. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we've got that on the books and they meet those regulations.
There you go.
So before we get the first one.
Well, we've already got one.
It's already in the hopper.
It's already there.
Goes to planning commission this month.
I know it has to come to us.
I know, it's, it's, I know.
It's already there.
It's been advertised.
But then it doesn't have to stay there, you can always, always vote your ordinance, except for those that are already been reached and previously.
Except for those, well, yeah, I understand that. The one that's there.
Would it stop the one that is in the process?
I don't think you can.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. Wouldn't stop that one, it'd just stop the ones after that.
Correct.
You'd have to vote that particular rezone down.
Don't they please, so. Okay, but that was really what I just wanted to, I just, yeah, was it's, it's coming.
Well, we'll probably see a lot of those requests in the next, but.
That, but that ordinance.
The support that she's talking about.
Well, now, in the budget already approved is a hundred and twenty-five thousand for updated land use codes.
And, yeah, for planner and.
And a part-time planner, so that's already in the works. Uh, so we saw this coming, we already saw this coming about a year or two ago, and, and now it's, it's coming here. So in preparation, we, you know, got in the budget for this year, July first, a part-time planner, I think it should be full-time, because somebody needs to coordinate all this and, and, and help us prepare all of these PRDs and, and ship us through the guidance process.
You've announced that, right?
What?
It's not, not been advertised yet.
I guess not.
No, not yet.
Well, I'm working on it. And we're preparing an RFP right now, along with all, with about twenty other bids we got on the hopper, um, the RFPs to update all the land use codes, so we'll get to it when we get to it. But so land use codes, uh, update, a part-time planner in the budget. We knew garbage was gonna be a problem, we got a new garbage route in this year's budget, i.e. a new truck and a new driver. Again, that is all out for bid. So we saw a lot of this coming, and a lot of it's in the budget this year.
But it's gonna be, but there's more that we're.
But there's more to be coming.
Support wise.
Oh, and also a new planning, a full-time planning tax in the community development market. I think Brian's.
That's the administrative assistant.
Yeah.
That's the title.
Our planning tax.
It would be up at now.
That's, that's been advertised, and we got a lot of good resumes.
He had about twenty, you said.
A lot of good applications, so he's doing all that too, to get in some help, administrative help.
Right.
For all the paperwork. So we saw it coming, and we're getting ready as, as much as we can. But it's gonna require not only support staff, but, you know, more sheriff's deputies.
Exactly.
Water, we don't have, we don't have a five-year water plan, a, you know, armed sewer plan. We don't have those, um, strategic plans in place.
Building inspectors?
Building inspectors.
I've seen it prior to that court, top of him making the money, more hill?
Yeah.
So I was just thinking.
It's coming.
Yeah, it's coming, and it's, I mean, it's here.
Yeah, Brian and I talked this afternoon, we counted up, and it's twenty-four, thirty-six years? Thirty-six years, twenty-four, thirty-six months, there's a lot of things happening. A lot of things are on the drawing board, uh, that's being talked about, um, it, it's coming. It's exciting, or it can be exciting.
Exciting and scary is. Exciting, it's scary, it's a whole lot of different things, but yes.
Look at Lee County.
Oh, just their charity.
Absolutely, not in Alabama, Lee County, Georgia.
Oh, just their charity.
They came out of Darrell Kelly, like.
They have two middle schools that are within walking distance of their high school, and they're gonna have two middle schools that are within walking distance of each other. Because it's just, I mean, it is, it's, it's a good board.
Okay, Ron, hotel motel tax.
Uh, all right, I have this on there, it's not really because I'm sitting here wanting to fight with the commission, the chamber of commerce or anybody, I'm not, uh, but I was the one that brought that up about, you know, we did have a right to, to, uh, keep some, certain, uh, percentage of the money that are given to them with hotel motel tax. And there was a question of if it was being spent correctly, and if we were getting them forth, at the time I brought it up, we were, the chamber was very, uh, way behind. Uh, as of now, they have caught up, even though they were like a day or two late on the last one, but they have caught up to everything. I still think there are some things they're, they're spending money on that maybe they shouldn't, um, I don't know the, all the ins and outs, I do know this, up in Truitt County, they had an issue, and where their person that was over their chamber, who called the hotel motel tax, got let go. And I just wanna make sure that we don't have the same issue here, and I think if, uh, we keep working together, and I'm not trying to be combative with them, I was at the, uh, ribbon cutting for the Mexican restaurant, uh, here, um, I think it was last Wednesday, I am very supportive of tourism in our chamber. But if we as commission don't continue to hold them accountable, I think we get back in that same thing where they're four, five, six reports away and haven't given it to us. And if I'm to be accountable as a commissioner, then I need to know why I'm holding them accountable, so that's why I'm asking those questions. I still think we ought to keep a percentage of it, I still think they should get three percent, we should keep two, uh, you know, but that's all of y'all. My main concern is to make sure that everything's being done above board, and I know we've had a changeover in the chamber, and we've had all that other stuff, and I get all that, but I feel like that in the past, it.